...in a school system in that they are performance-based classes. It is my responsibility to provide performance experiences for these students, both in our community and out. On the band side, many of these experiences are sports-related. For many of these band students not involved in sports, this is their high school activity, which also happens to be co-curricular. I've been very sad about your choice not to fund us this year. I'm very proud of the fact that we have 47 kids in the high school band. They've chosen to be in band. I have two-thirds of the student body who choose to be in music. I feel we have a successful program. I realize you have to regulate the school as a whole, but I ask you to listen on as I explain a few key points and deepen your understanding. I wish you all could witness the dedication and quality of these kids during their performances. They often play with half the band missing because of involvement and other school activities, and still manage to fill out most of the parts and sound pretty dang good. How do I, as their teacher, keep them dedicated and their morale's up if they feel they don't have a whole lot of value as a co-curricular in the high school? It's very hard to thank a group of students for all of their class rehearsal time when in the next breath I have to say, "I'm sorry, but you can't perform. We can't go." Budget-wise, I understand you're hoping to save money by limiting spending. As a math fact, I penciled out a generous $5,000 per out-of-district tournament. That's divisional volleyball, if it lays out, state volleyball, and a divisional basketball tournament. I am estimating I would take about 105 students to these three tournaments. That's about 35 students per tournament. When you divide that out, it equals about $143 per student. This is less than $50 per day with hotel, two meals, transportation, and driver costs. Also, that is assuming that we stay the full three days of a tournament through Saturday. I think that's a pretty cheap investment for all the co-curricular, for all three co-curricular activities. We did not even come close to that when I took the kids to Bozeman. I am not a good banker for money. I'll tell you that upfront. It was very hard for me to go to Booster Club and ask. I truly feel I don't run an extravagant program. I do have a healthy activity account. However, that is for my uniforms, that's for supplies. For example, on Monday, I will feed my choir kids in Bozeman after they're done performing at McDonald's. It's for the entire music department, not for just the pep band. I cannot in good faith deplete that account just because it's easy for the administration and the board to save that money. Again, I refer to that $50 figure and think that it's pretty fiscally responsible for a co-curricular activity that is directly related to classroom instruction. Keep in mind, the Montana High School Association does not regulate equality during tournament play because there is no crystal ball saying that your team will make it or not. Just because you deny the girls' event does not mean you have to deny the boys to keep it equal. Those of you that know me know that I do my utmost to maintain a quality program where the kids feel included and successful. That is why this is so important to me. It is my job to go back for these students who work so hard for me, for their school, and for this community. I welcome your feedback and thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Lauren?
So, Mrs. Depper. So, if you put together a rough budget, then you're saying $43 per student?
I'm saying if it costs us $5,000 to send these kids to a tournament, it's about 143 a day. I think I went $120. I just use that as the base for a motel group. And I'm not sure what those are right now.
So, if you were to give us a rough budget right now, it'd be $5,000?
I'm just gonna say that's on the high side. I'm gonna say, you know, it cost us to go to Bozeman, and that was just one overnight. It was roughly right around the $2,000 mark. I got those figures from Jackie today.
That was food, lodging, bus, everything was...
Right. That's it.
That was fuel. Fuels. Okay. Good? You have something, Joe?
No, I was just saying that, I just did a quick math. Thirty-five is kind of your average participation is what you're expecting at the 143. So, that's like, yeah, forty, right at $5,000.
It's $1,500 a day times three days, what you did then?
I took 143 times 35.
You get 143 a day?
143 a day, yeah.
Times three days.
And that's, you know, that's, I tried to shoot a little bit over that, so...
Well, no, it's 50 a day.
Right.
Right.
Not quite 50. It's 143 divided by three, you know, for their three days.
I'm sorry, I'm lost. Yeah, my mind was going someplace else, and now I just totally got... So, the way I first heard it, it was $43 per student per day.
If we were there, say we go to Malta.
Okay.
We're there Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
I'll read it to you. I'm estimating I would take 100, well, when you divide that out, it equals about $143 per student per day.
Per day?
Yes.
Three.
If I take them to all three, you're talking about all three, not just this one? Right, and, yes, and if I took them to all three in a year, it would be about $50 a day. You have not asked Booster Club for this one? No, I have not, I don't, yes. Just say 143 a day.
143 a day, times 35, just 35 students. Just make sure I'm right. Times three. No?
No.
No. 143 was...
You're saying 143 a day?
Right.
It's not per day, though. That's for three days.
It's for all three days.
All three days?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I'm trying, that's where it was, the terminology, okay.
It's less than $50 a day per kid if it's at 143.
Anybody else have any questions for Lauren? I, so, you know, we went and visited, which you do do a great job. I have, I have some public comment I'd like to feed back to you. And so, who determines when you play at the home games?
I do.
Okay. And you choose not to play in the Boulder game?
The reason we did was that was, the Boulder, that was during Christmas vacation.
Right.
And kids are on vacation. How are you gonna call them?
Well, I guess, so, their comment, they were confused. They asked during the game, I had that asked of me. I didn't know who, if you determined it or why.
I did that one.
And they, they were confused, why shouldn't she play at all the home games and be able to have the right to go out of district, was their thought. So, two people there, and then I had some conversations afterwards, and some of the people felt the same way. So, I feel compelled to let you know what some of the public...
Well, there are a lot of, there are a lot of schools that don't play volleyball too, but yet they go to tournament. So, you know, we, we do the volleyball, we do football, we do basketball.
Right.
We try and hit out as many as we can.
So, the other question I had was from them was, and I didn't have the answer, how many different venues do you travel to as the band?
As far as...
Band, and, like, if you do consider all of your regular band and choir traveling, and your, say, all your conference games, or, I mean, like, district games, how many do we go to, how many does a band go to in the course of a year, this time?
Well, you have, like, mass band, correct me?
That's true.
Oh, okay.
We do our festivals, district festivals, state festivals. Every other year I take them to the UDBS.
Honor band and choir?
Yeah, honor band and choirs every year. That's not a little band. No, that is, that's, yeah, that's not...
Those are participation.
Okay. And then, then district tournaments.
And then divisional, when they're in, for sure when they're in.
Divisional when they're in there.
And when it's, and when it's boys and girls together, like, now that they are, will always attend one divisional tournament.
Right.
Because it's in, in distance.
In distance. Okay. So, six times, six, two halves. Okay? Jerry, you got anything? For Lauren? Pat? Ish? Oh.
So, past policy, and I don't remember how far back it went, was it the band was never allowed outside of district? I mean, the divisionals, if it was in the district area, then they didn't travel. I think that's the way it was when I first came on the board, I believe, and it was that way until about, yeah, three or four years ago, wasn't it? Whatever, I think, four years ago, maybe.
Fifteen or sixteen, yeah.
Something like that. So, and if I remember right, in the past was the same thing due to expenses and stuff like that. So, that's some of the history behind it, too, is that in the past it was. I totally understand what Lauren's saying, because the only reason I played pep band in high school was to go to tournaments. That's pure fact. I mean, I enjoyed band, but I wanted to go to tournaments. There was, there was a reward at the end. You put in your hard work, you played at every home game, was to go to tournaments. So, I totally understand.
It's not easy being fiscally responsible sometimes.
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
So, most of you know me, I'm Amber, sorry, I'll stand up. I'm Amber Johnson, the student body president this year, and I have been a member of the band since my freshman year, and I made some of my greatest memories. But I also want you to remember that oftentimes we are the only cheering section, and I know I played basketball in New York before I got injured with my legs, and that cheering section sometimes is just that extra little bit, and the extra support and seeing the friends cheering you on can mean so much to those people on the court, and it also means a lot seeing that pride from other schools saying, "Hey, these guys are all here to support their team," and that's really cool. And this will be my last tournament year, and so it means a lot to me to be able to go this year. So, how do we take that into consideration?
Thank you.
Amber.
Thank you.
May I? May I?
Yes, you may.
Hi, I'm Ellie Lee. I'm a junior.
You're okay. Take your time.
She's in the board point of the draw.
Clearly.
I assume most of you know I'm in volleyball, I'm in track, I'm in speech and drama, but it is my life. I mean, we spent three months in volleyball, three months in speech and drama, two months in track. We spent the entire year in band. We worked every day. Every day we perfect everything we do. And going to tournaments, I mean, we went to the point this year, and we didn't have a pep band, we didn't have a cheer squad, and, I mean, that was hard. But that was, I mean, it was far away, it was understandable, but, I mean, this is important We perfect, and if we were a bad-sounding band, it would be understandable. But we sound good, and I believe that Mrs. Depper has heard this. I believe that we as a band have heard this.
So, may I ask you and Amber some questions then?
Yeah.
So, you, you wanna go, and there's nothing we can do this year, but let's, let's start planning ahead, let's start working ahead. Concessions, you guys, is the band willing to work concessions to help the district offset the costs? I, I'm, I'm trying to throw auctions out there, because this bridge is gonna have to be crossed year after year after year.
I understand.
So, where can we come together and work together to try to make this bridge easier to cross?
I guess, Mark, a problem maybe I'm having is, I feel like we're the only curricular area right now that has taken a direct hit. No other, no other program has taken a hit except for the band. You've made some across-the-board cuts, but we're in.
Well, but I also look back to four years ago, they didn't go anyplace. And we had some money for a few years, and that's where we're allowed to go. So, now, if the money's gonna be tight again, what can we do to help offset it? So, it's not picking on the band, it also has to do with where we are financially. So, that's the reason I'm bringing it up. It's gonna have to be crossed again. Is it something that the, the band, and I ask in students, is that something that you guys, to be able to take the trip, willing to help offset it?
I mean, I would.
And, and I'm not, I don't feel like we're picking on the band, it's... So, that's where my points come from. And if you feel that way, I do apologize, that's not my intent. As I said, that was the reason I played pep band. Back then, I didn't know anything about the financial end of the school or anything. All I know is we always went and we always had a good time, and it was fun, and I enjoyed it. And I'd like to be able to offer that, but at the same time, what can, are we willing to work together to get the same outcome?
I had one quick question, and then I'll come to you. But anyway, and I'm not sure if I know the answer, I don't know the answer, but like, all the basketball, football, volleyball money goes back to the, into the activity fund. Why doesn't, what, why is it the band doesn't? Why does the band go to a separate account of its own? Because here's, here's how it works, the football, it's just, it's just how it works. Football, basketball, volleyball, we, we kind of hold our own financially, and then through track, and track, baseball, and then we just, you know, because not the spectator, they're not spectator sport, so then we just drain down, you know, we kind of hold our own because of the number of people that come to the games.
In the activity fund.
Yeah, activity funded, so, you know, if we talk, is that, why is that? I guess, I, if we talk fairness, I need an explanation of why that doesn't come back into it when all the other sports do. I don't know why that is. It's just something we've been doing, or...
Just, I don't know the answer to that either. It's been the, the way it is, is, I guess, from my perspective. And band has little income, that's from your concert, correct? Which goes into the band fund?
Right.
Well, it's an activity fund, but not part of it.
It's a music activity.
General activity fund.
And that's the one you talked to me about that you used to buy stuff with for the band, correct?
Well, for the music department.
For the, excuse me, but specifically just for that, right? For the acti, for the band, and, so like in the, in the other sports, it's shared, right?
I'll let the other question.
But I'm sorry, Melanie, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, band is co-curricular, and so is choir. You can degrade in participating, you can fulfill graduation, and I don't know if that makes the difference in why that money stays with your department or not, but I suspect that that's probably what you're wanting. I know that the dials have been extremely generous, and I know that they, while they haven't written the check yet, pledged to donate some no strings attached money.
We've gotten it.
Have you already budgeted it? Is there any chance that any of that money could be used for this?
Yeah, I mean, it could, yes. It can be used for virtually anything. It's $35,000, yes. I will interject and answer your question, Mark, because I did talk to Booster Club about this, and Booster Club was nice enough to help out with this travel to state volleyball to Bozeman, which I believe their donation covered the cost total. And asked again if they would be willing to help out, and absolutely, absolutely was the response. Well, and I'm sorry, but what I was thinking is, if the students want to, why not let our students be engaged in doing it, too? It gives them that, again, that, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, that self-pride to help, we helped earn, we, we were earning our trip to go. And if they can offset some of the costs, I, I think it's a win-win for the district and a win-win for the pep band.
Just, um, I'm involved in nearly everything in this one, also our president and our honor society president, and I'm going in a thousand different directions right now already, and sometimes it's really hard to get the people who are dedicated to show up to fundraise and things like that because they have so many other commitments, and I think it's something that we're willing to work with, but I just think that, like, concessions can be difficult because we're out there playing, or we're at speech and drama, or whatever, maybe for others.
Long-term, I think you're talking about that kind of a thing. That's a long-term goal. For this one, if Booster Club's able to help out, they say by how much, and how much would we be different?
Well, I think Lauren's estimate of 5,000 is high for travel. I think it's probably realistically closer to 3,500 to four in that range, maybe even less than 35, to get them to Malta back. I think that would be a realistic number, so...
We don't know how much Booster Club would offer.
Well, I'm, no, for sure, no, I don't.
For sure, we don't know.
No, I don't want to speak for Booster Club, so... Booster Club, in talking to Mrs. McCollum, who's been part of that for quite a while, very receptive to this, and her point was, this is what Booster Club is for, this is why we sell fireworks, to help with this.
It's not gonna last for five years that we have to take out of Booster Club, that's, it's not a long-term solution either, I assume, but this year's solution is a possibility.
And I will tell you, as I reported before, our high school budget, we are 2% ahead of last year at this point in time. Does, I was gonna ask, does that include the $35,000 being put back into the budget? No. No. Okay. The reason, again, I was asking, is I was, wanted to support them for this, but I also wanted to try to get a commitment to see if, because they're gonna cross this bridge every year. Is there some way the pep band can do some sort of...
How much are you asking?
I don't know, but some, some sort of, yeah. There was a, a group that sold Little Caesar pizzas, and I don't think nobody sold it for quite a few years. They made a lot of money selling Little Caesar pizzas.
Close-up sales.
Close-up sales. Well, they still, nobody's knocked on my door for seven years, probably.
He's gotta buy some.
My kids are almost all gone, so I don't know. So, I, I'm just trying to think of some ways to, to, to look at a long-term fix, or some way to help. If that makes sense. So, then I would make a motion that would allow the pep band to go to Malta. They can check with Booster Club to see if they would be willing to help in any fashion, and then whatever Booster Club doesn't, or if they're willing to split it 50/50, whatever, that we would proceed with that. Also, with the recommendation that the band would maybe look at some sort of fundraiser. Is, is that unreasonable to ask, Lauren?
It is, I guess, as long as I know that it's not, I guess...
We're not expecting to pay for the whole trip, but if you can come up and help us, then we're, we're working together towards the solution and stuff like that. If that's, if that's reasonable, we're gonna, and it doesn't have to be cut and dried before you leave. I mean, we wanna, whatever we do, we wanna do a quality job of doing whatever the fundraising is, because that way it's somebody, it's somebody wants to do it continually every year, so, but if we could get a commitment from you or the band and stuff to look at that, because it's all...
But you're, I will interject, if you're asking us then to play at every home game, to work concessions...
Well, concessions was a bad idea, so I...
You're...
That came off the top of my head. It doesn't work because everybody's playing the band, and nobody do concessions, right? I understand, I understand that, but there's some sort of maybe fundraiser that we can figure out to do.
And I will say, I will continue to pick and choose, just because we do every season, and, and there are some days, it isn't gonna work.
Well, there's some days you don't have, you have...
Kids aren't available.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no kids.
I just, yeah, I cannot commit to saying I will be at every home game.
No.
Realistically.
Right, I just, so, that's fine, but, ah, to comment to that, I went to Conrad the game after, and I was kind of impressed, they had one kid playing the drums, and one, one JV basketball player played the electric guitar, and they did the National Anthem, and, and that would have been enough for me. You know, one or two, you don't need a whole band, I mean, just, we played a recording, and I felt outdone by Conrad. When a kid gets off the court and his warm-up and sits down, and, I don't even, we talked, I don't remember if the band director was even there, but...
Yeah, I didn't even notice a band director there, and so many of their kids also were in basketball, too. I mean, they were kind of in the same...
It meant something to me to see them do that, that's kind of, but anyway.
So, I'm second Mark's motion.
All right.
Lauren, I'd be glad to this with Booster Club more formally to get them, so you don't have to. Thank you, Chuck. Is that a win-win for us, I hope?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. Okay, spin move and second it to, how do you have it wrote down?
Allow pep band to go to Malta, we're checking with Booster Club to see what they will cover, heart cost or all cost, and then we figure out how to cover the rest, is that correct?
I, I, I think the, we shouldn't go to the booster for everything. I think the school should pony up and do something, but a booster recovered 50%, and we covered 50%, or is that... I think that would be realistic. I think, I, I...
Give it a number, I think.
Yes, I think that would be realistic. That, that's where my intention was going, when I was saying it, I may not have been very clear, but that's what I was...
No, that's what I heard him say.
So, okay, so I did...
Are you good with it?
They did very generous, I mean...
That's, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to, I wanna be that we...
Okay, so I just put 50/50 in there as well.
Think about it.
We just had, we should play meeting last night, and we brought it up, and again, we were just all like, yes, you know, for sure, the band needs money, so, we just talked about that last night.
And this is why it's so important to help sell fireworks. And this is why it's so important to help sell fireworks for those, you know, people who sign up and sell fireworks every year. That's where majority of Booster Club's money comes from, or helps Christina set that up and all that, so. It's a greatly appreciated, our Booster Club and the work they do to raise funds, raise funds to support our school, so. The rest of the motion, I'm sorry, getting into that.
Get finished.
So fifty percent, then what?
Well, check with Booster Club to see what, they will cover part cost, and we will cover the rest. And then I have fifty-fifty.
Okay, and then the band's gonna look at future fundraising.
Do you want that in the motion?
Yes.
But we've already had.
That's how we said.
Is that how we said it?
We need that we allow the pep club, pep band, go to Malta with assistance from the Booster Club. If the Booster Club doesn't cover, the high school will cover, and at the end of the band, we'll look at goodbye.
Thanks.
You guys all hear that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll get a correct.
You guys are comfortable, okay? Any, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, aye. Pose same sign, aye. Motion carries. Okay? All right, consider attendance agreements, Patty.
I don't have any.
Coaching staff resignation.
I do have a resignation from Mrs. Jennifer Peters, who has been our high school night custodian. Because of health reasons, she is unable to continue the position. And this was effective twelve fifteen, December fifteenth of last year. It's unfortunate. Jennifer did a great job for us, and appreciate that. Just, you know, I, I currently have a substitute, Tanner Erdman, uh, working in her position. I do have a few applicants also for the position. Actually, I have three applicants on my desk, in addition to Tanner for the position. So I'll be looking at that in the next couple of weeks. As we've done before, I, I wanna wait to hire anyone, so attention to the February meeting, maybe even the March meeting, to actually commit to hire someone for that position, but we are trying to get a person out currently, and we'll see how that goes. But anyway, again, I'd like to thank Jennifer Peters for her interest in the district, and I would recommend accepting the resignation. That was so moved.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to consider Jennifer's resignation.
And appreciation of her, uh, work that she's done for us.
Yep. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Was that it, Chuck, on just that one?
That's the only one I have.
Individual transportation agreements.
Nope.
Consider approval of additional extracurricular sports volunteers.
I have one coal word all who's interested in volunteering for Rested Program, and I would recommend him, uh, his approval pending his, uh, the completion of his background check.
So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Consider approval of additions to the substitute list.
And at this point in time, I don't have any. I think I'm gonna have a, such another substitute activity driver in the near future, though.
Oh, good.
Yep.
In, in the, being tested and working on it?
Already has it.
Oh, cool. That is great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that John? No. I tried to trick you.
All right, so during the meeting.
Next meet, next meeting.
Please.
Okay, I'll run and get to that. Next meeting is Tuesday, February eleventh, okay? Yep, that's our regular scheduled meeting, no conflicts. Okay. I don't think so. Okay, I will run away.
Sure.